Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, August 10th, Penfield Town Board Work Session. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I would just like to note for the record that all the Town Board members are present, and we have Councilperson Lee by Zoom. We also have our Director of Planning and Engineering, Director of Finance, Director of Public Works, and our Deputy Town Clerk. And we do want to extend a warm welcome to our Town Attorney, or one of our Town Attorneys, right, Attorneys for the Town. And that's Pete Weiser.
Thank you.
So, thank you so much for joining us. And Pete, you'll be at our work sessions primarily. So that'll be a bit of a change. So, thank you.
Glad to be here. Thank you.
Welcome. Okay. Moving on to our approval of minutes from the July 27th work session.
Madam Supervisor, I would propose, I have a slight edit in the minutes.
Okay.
So, on page three, count under the, in the, about one, six paragraphs down, "Councilperson blank moved to set a public hearing, seconded by Councilperson Draw." I believe that was Councilperson Cole. It should be in there. And that, other than that, that's my...
So, are you moving that?
I'm moving that those minutes be approved with this edit.
Second.
Excellent. I have a motion by Councilperson Draw and a second by Councilperson Cole. Are there any questions or comments about the minutes other than that amendment? Okay.
Good job.
We'll just have to roll call vote.
Cinty?
Aye.
Draw?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Lee? Ockenden?
Aye.
All aye.
Thank you. And just a reminder for the Board members that monthly reports have largely been turned in. I think the deadline was today. If you are a committee or a department head who has not yet turned in their monthly report, please do so at your earliest convenience. And we will move into, right directly into our special guests. We do have Nathan Chidsey, who's an Eagle Scout candidate and would like to discuss his Eagle Scout project with us. So Nathan, if you'd like to come on up, have a seat, anywhere you feel would be comfortable.
Hello? All right. Works.
So Nathan, just feel free to introduce yourself. Probably start with your name and address for the record, and then talk a little bit about what your Eagle Scout project is.
My name is Nathan Chidsey. I'm going to my junior year of high school at Penfield High School. I am currently the Senior Patrol Leader of Troop 312, and I am one of the many Scouts working towards their Eagle Scout rank.
Thank you.
I'm here today to propose an Eagle Scout project. The Eagle project consists of building and maintaining an orienteering course at Shadow Pines. Now, what is orienteering, you might ask? Orienteering is an activity that uses a map and compass along with the environment around you to get to various markers in the least amount of time. Orienteering consists of a little bit of everything. This includes teamwork, problem solving, running, and much more. I would like to transition into the markers. So the markers we use to prove that you were at that location. This is one of our marker handouts. It is orange, white, very easy to see. This is an example of markers at Webster Park. Webster Park has a permanent orienteering course, and they use metal and wooden posts into the ground with the orienteering marker. Rochester Orienteering Club is providing the markers along with the finished map. We would post these markers in various locations around Shadow Pines. Now, I'd like to move into where we would put these markers. So if we look at Shadow Pines, we, I have a little bit of a base map here. Clark Road separates the park into two parts, northern and southern part. Shadow Pines provides white and yellow orienteering marker trails, which is beginner to an advanced beginner, white being a beginner and yellow being a little more of an advanced beginner. The northern part of Shadow Pines, just north of Clark Road, this is where the town would like to build their Frisbee Golf Course. This leaves the northern part and south of Clark Road open for use. The northern part above the Frisbee Golf Course shows for a white beginner course because of its open trails and small tree lines. The southern part below Clark Road has potential for a yellow advanced beginner because of its overgrowth of vegetation. Now, I'd like to get into the financial part of this project. I know, boring money. One of the great things about this project is how inexpensive it is. Rochester Orienteering Club will provide the finished map and markers. The only cost that could come across is the wooden posts, metal posts, or small tools, items, any miscellaneous things that might come along my way. Some solutions include asking for donations from hardware stores, me personally starting a fundraiser, or if the town would like to provide financial support. Now, I'd like to talk about the purpose of this orienteering course. This orienteering course is intended for recreational use, schools, youth groups, scout troops, along with the general public that wants to try something new are the intented crowd. Anyone who wants to get out of the house and pick up orienteering are all welcome. This course will also complement the geocaches already at Shadow Pines. Previously, I had met with Mr. Irkfits along with the Rochester Orienteering Club to get their support. Both parties thought it would be a great place to have an orienteering course. Now, I'd like to talk about the benefits. To the public, this course provides a fun activity for youth, local, and the local population. To the town, this course develops an educational health and wellness opportunity at Shadow Pines. To Rochester Orienteering Club, helps promote the sport of orienteering along with hosting events at Shadow Pines. To scout troops, a place to have troop meetings and work on orienteering requirements. To me, this benefits myself as a requirement towards my Eagle Scout rank. In final consideration, with the partnership of the Town of Penfield, Rochester Orienteering Club, me, along with Troop 312, bringing an orienteering course to Shadow Pines will be a great addition to what Penfield, New York, has to offer in the great outdoors.
Thank you very much, Nathan. I'd like to give an opportunity for Board members to ask any questions. Are there any Board members who would like to ask? Anything?
You know, hey, great program here that you've put together here. I appreciate that, Nathan. I think you put a lot of time and effort into it. I just have a couple of questions about, so when you say that you've looked at the overall site, and you list the, on the, you list, you know, an easier course, an easier orienteering on the one side and on the, across the road is more of a, more intense, right? But when you say that, so the proposed shared uses, so you can put your, you could put orienteering markers all throughout, right? You don't have to avoid, you don't have to avoid like the disc golf area, do you?
You don't have to, but however the town wants to divide it, if they want to divide Frisbee Golf from orienteering, they can do that. Now, they can put it together if they want to.
Because people, like, you do your, you do your markers, I mean, you might do it at a different time when someone else, you know, or you can go around them, right? Like, if there's somebody who's playing Frisbee Golf in that one section, you could go to a different, a different marker, correct? And work your way back?
One of the things about orienteering is you can go off trail, because some courses are designed to go off trail, but these are more designed to stay on trail.
Okay.
Because they're a little bit easier, because that's what the environment around us shows. But you could obviously put it through the Frisbee Golf Course if you want to.
Okay. Cool. And one other question. You said, you mentioned at the beginning that the Rochester Orienteering would pay for the markers?
They will provide the markers and the map.
Okay. Which is just the markers are just, are just what goes on a stake, right? One of these stakes? So the stakes we, someone else would, we would have to do, find a way to pay for it, correct?
Yeah. So the wooden posts and the metal posts will have to be paid for.
Gotcha. Okay. Great. I like that. I like the idea. Thank you.
I'm just curious about the geocaching. Who puts the geocaching things in that you communicate with? I mean, how do you know it's okay to, to partner? It makes sense. I don't use geocache, but you know, I think it's a good idea, because I see these geocache things up in trees or, you know, hidden around and stuff. Geocache is here. But when you're doing the orienteering, it does make sense if you could use the same thing. It would be one less metal thing to put up.
It's a similar activity, which means the environment is very, it can work for both.
But how do you, how do you know, who did you communicate with them to be able to, like, yeah, sure, do that too? How do you?
Well, geocaching, they probably have a website or an app where they're all posted and you go find them. It wouldn't really cross paths with the orienteering course, as it's a pretty similar activity.
I thought you said they could use the same marker or something, no?
No. Because geocaches are, they could be big boxes, they could be tiny boxes, and usually there's like cool stuff in there, so maybe like coins.
Right. So you really have no relationship to them?
No, but they're similar activities.
That's what you're saying. It's me, a little confused there, thanks.
Nathan, the markers that you speak of, are you familiar with how, like I say, Webster did their installation? Are they set in concrete? Are they just, you know, dug into the ground and sunk that way? Do you have any idea how that, how that's done?
I don't know specifically at Webster Park how they're put in. I just know that they use wooden posts, metal posts, and they put it in the ground. But we could always work out how we want to put it in the ground to make it best for the environment.
Gotcha. And they stay there? I mean, it's not something you move. It's a permanent installation?
We had an idea of making it movable, but we just realized it would be too much of a task to move them all around the place when we could just make a permanent course and everyone can enjoy it.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Do we have any other orienteering courses in?
We have one near Genesee County, I'm pretty sure.
But not here in Penfield?
No, not in Penfield. There's one, Webster Park, I already said, and there's one.
I think there's one in Mendon or Powder Mills.
I think there is one in.
So this provides a need. I know that Rochester Orienteering, I'm sure they have.
Yeah, Genesee County Park also has a permanent course.
I think there's one up at Cops Hill, that area too.
Councilperson Lee, do you have any questions? Okay. I did have two questions for you, Nathan. What kind of maintenance would be needed from the town on an ongoing basis?
So, me, myself, and the troop will be putting the posts in the ground, because that, I have to lead the project. That's the, one of the requirements. We would also be there frequently, because it would be a great place to have troop meetings and have orienteering requirements done. We'd also check in on it, make sure it's not overgrowth. But that's the one thing I need to talk to one of the individual trail members about, is the overgrowth of vegetation, how we can counter that.
Sure. But in general, I think orienteering is a fairly low-impact activity, and it doesn't seem to require, you know, it doesn't require mowing. It's really just about making sure that those markers are visible.
Yeah.
Correct? And I know you might have said it, but what is your timeframe again?
So I would like to finish the project by snowfall.
Okay. So this year?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm thinking we could build it around fall, probably October, November, you know, where it's a little bit colder out, not before snow, though.
And I do want to mention to the other Board members that this orienteering course, an orienteering course is one of the activities that was recommended by the Land Use Committee. So that's in keeping with their recommendations. Again, very low-impact. Okay. Any other?
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, of course.
Posts, as far as how many of these posts, did you mention that? Did I miss that?
No, I talked to the orienteering course. When I met with them, they said about 20, 15, 20.
Great. Good job. Good idea.
And how often do you envision the Orienteering Club maybe wanting to come in and use the course?
So they said that they would utilize it for beginner events, so people who want to try it out, see if they like it. They didn't give me a timestamp on how often they would do it, but they said that they would definitely consider doing events there.
Okay. So the only thing I would just say is that, you know, as this becomes online, so to speak, that they work with the Recreation Department if they, you know, if people want to use it. Okay. Great. Any other questions? Comments? All right. So are we okay with Nathan moving forward?
I think so.
Yeah.
I don't know if we need a motion per se.
He's a guest.
Yeah. What would you like to do?
I'd make a motion that we move ahead and approve Nathan's Eagle Scout proposal here. I think it's a great idea.
And I'll second that. And I would assume that Mr. Tate and company would be involved in any kind of planning or, you know, actual installation and that sort of thing, right?
Yep. So I'll second that.
Absolutely. Excuse me. Both myself and our parks foreman, Tim Mastern, are both fellow Eagle Scouts. So we'd be happy to help out, understanding what the project requires, what it entails. I know, Nathan, you mentioned getting donations for some of the wood or the posts. Again, kind of talking from experience, I know a lot of the local home improvement stores and lumber yards are happy to, you know, assist and provide donations to you. In the event that you need anything additional, please let us know. We do budget, you know, to be able to help out with some of these projects in the event that there's a need.
All right.
Mr. Tate, do you have any concerns at all on behalf of the Department of Public Works with this project?
No primary concerns. My only, I guess, suggestion would be that we somewhat avoid the area of the disc golf course, in the sense that, you know, rather than putting a post in the center of, you know, one of the playable areas, that it could be kind of shifted to, you know, one side or the other, just to kind of coordinate around that. But other than that, I guess maybe on the, kind of the back nine, the southern portion, maybe avoiding the area where there, you know, is kind of proposed for the mountain biking course, just so you don't, you know, have any groups or, you know, whatnot, looking for a post in the middle of a track. Try to prevent any issues. Aside from that, I think it'd be a great addition and, you know, low maintenance.
Great. So you'll work with the, you'll work with Mr. Masterton and Mr. Irkfits, Mr. Tate on the placement of those posts? All right. So I have a motion by Councilperson Draw and a second by Councilperson Ockenden to move forward with this project.
I do have one question.
Yes.
So for my Eagle Scout workbook, I require three signatures, one from my Scout Master, one from my committee chair, and one from the beneficiary. And the beneficiary would be the town. So do you know who would be able to sign that? Would it be Mr. Irkfits, one of you guys?
I am certain that we will find someone to sign that for you.
I think the town supervisor would be.
She would love to sign that for you.
Thank you.
Not a problem.
We want, make sure you invite us out to do it and take us, will you take us on the course?
Okay.
That's our, that's our ask for you.
And make sure you invite us to your Eagle Scout ceremony, too.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Cinty?
Aye.
Draw?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
All aye.
Thank you. It is not on the agenda, and, Mr. Weiser, I did want to go into executive session at this point. Is it okay if I just make a motion then?
Yeah. If you make a motion and you state the reason to go into executive session.
Sure. So I would like to move to, go into executive session pursuant to Public Officers Law 105, to discuss issues relating to public employee collective bargaining, negotiating, and personnel matters related to the appointment of a particular person.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Can we just do a roll call vote for that, please?
I'm sorry. Cinty?
Aye.
Draw?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Lee? Ockenden?
Aye.
All aye.
Okay. We'll stand adjourned for a moment. Thank you, everyone, and I'd like to make a motion to return back into regular session.
And I'll second that.
All right. May I have a roll call vote?
Cinty?
Aye.
Draw?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Lee? Ockenden?
Aye.
All aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. So moving along, we can go into our action items. The first one up is discussion of Clark House. I need to apologize, I left my agenda back in my office. I'll go get it.
No.
Oh, you got it? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. I'm set.
We're good.
We're good. All right. Mr. Tate?
Great. Thank you. So just for everyone's, to inform everyone, last Monday, August 1st, a few members of the Town Board joined the Historic Preservation Board, and myself, we went through, did a tour of the Clark House, just so everyone could kind of see, you know, a little bit better in person, the inside and the outside, as well as kind of a brief overview of what, you know, has been done to date, what findings we've come up with, what ideas have been discussed, you know, and what, I guess, what information Bergman, as well as some of the other groups have put together, you know, for consideration and review. You know, with that said, I think, you know, ultimately, we've kind of looked at, you know, possible uses and what, you know, I guess, possible work that the building would need, whether it was to be, you know, a portion, all, or none to be, you know, saved, rebuilt, you know, reconstructed, you know, ultimately looking for, you know, a little feedback from, from this group as to, you know, what exactly we'd like to move forward with, as far as the use of that building itself, to get kind of a better idea of what it would take.
Thanks, Eric. So the only thing I want to communicate, just to bring the Board up to speed, is that I was with Councilperson Cole, and we attended Historic Preservation Board, where this was a topic of discussion. By and large, their feeling was that the historically significant part really is just that front part, and that their recommendation was that every effort be made to save that. They also, and I would agree with them, said that probably the first question is, what do you want to do with the building first? You know, you try to decide what your use is and then go from there, too. So was I missing anything?
No, that was it. And then we got the email from our Town Historian, who wasn't at the meeting, but she echoed what you just said, about the 1832 portion of the building.
Right. And then we also had an email from a member of the Planning Board, who's also a resident, also expressing the same concern. So I think that was all the information I had to share out, but it's really a discussion about where you'd like to go.
Well, I think we would agree that one thing that wasn't in the report was how much it was going to cost just to save the 1832 portion, what it would mean. And we really need to get some sort of estimate on that, because we've gotten estimates about, you know, how much it would cost to preserve it all, and how much it would cost to take it down and rebuild it and this kind of thing, but nothing about just that portion. When we talked about it initially, we had a business that was interested in going in, and they wanted to have a restaurant portion to it. And the restaurant portion to it is in the backend, it's in the second level of this 1937 addition. So it was a matter of, well, you have to keep that, but then again, you know, they're not interested any longer, so that went away. You know, and I think the point that the Historic Board is, they like to keep the 1832, but what are we going to do in it? You know, are we going to do something ourselves, you know, and have it as a office space? Or are we going to rent it out? What are we going to do? And it would mean a lot to how we're going to preserve it, if we're going to use the upstairs. There's so many things to consider. So we need, we need that information, I think, from Bergman.
Eric, is that something we could ask Bergman to do?
So I certainly can. And just to clarify, you're looking for a number if the, kind of the middle portion from the early 1900s, as well as the newest addition, which is kind of the pro shop in the kitchen area.
Went away.
If those two sections were, you know, torn down, removed, and the, just the original homestead kind of house portion were brought, I guess, back to life, more or less. I can certainly do that. I guess my only other question is, the numbers that they had previously provided, again, not knowing the use, were for a watertight shell? Do you, are you, is the Board looking for numbers for a watertight shell for the, just the, simply the house portion, or to have the inside finished to some degree as well? And if so?
That always goes back to the use, right?
Sure.
That's what are we going to use the building for? So I see your point. We just, I think there's, we still have to give them a little bit more direction, too. I'm wondering how the other Board members are feeling and what their own personal vision might be.
I know both Councilperson Ockenden and myself toured with, with Mr. Tate the other night. We thank you for that tour, along with the members of the Historics Board. So I think one, pretty much you summed it up, what both, what everyone had agreed on of the main building. I think there was a lot of talk about whether or not we just go back to almost like a lodge, you know, use that as a, could we use it maybe for the history room, local history room? Or is it, could we use it for seniors? But there was kind of discussion about that. Do we, do we just, is it a focal point? Is it just end up becoming, you know, just do we restore it? But you're right, we didn't talk about, there wasn't, there was a lot of discussion about what people wanted to see, just that we make sure we wanted to save that piece. But I don't think we ever really came up with exactly, you know, people had a lot of different ideas, but seeing what the use was.
Yeah, exactly. And I guess that's the tough part. I think there's a desire to keep the original portion from everybody we heard from or spoke to that day. But again, it's a small, once you tear off those additions, it's pretty small, and what would you actually do with it? I know there was some discussion about whether an addition would be added to the backside of it, that would create a lodge that people, residents could rent. I know Mr. Tate mentioned that something like that would also provide the opportunity for restroom facilities to kind of be built into that, which would then provide that for the park as well. So I think that's still an item that, you know, we would take a deeper look at and see what that would entail, what it would look like, what kind of cost might be associated with that. But again, I think the real tough part is, what do you do with that small space up front? And again, whether there's...
Right. Well, you know, one thing, you know, Mira Mikulowski, she's an architect, and she's on the Historic Board, and she said that, you know, and her thought was that we could build on, you know, you take down those other two portions, and if we want a kitchen and we want that kind of meeting room or assembly space, that building onto that new would be less expensive than rehabbing what's there now. So that sounds like a fresh idea. We just need to know what we want to do with it. And also, another thing they were talking about was, you know, Chuck Fox, he's also on the Historic Board, and he works in preservation in the city, and he mentioned that he wondered why we hadn't had anything about, like, having a historian come in and do some kind of evaluation.
Yeah. And I do have some information on that as well, which is that the person who clerks the Board, Shannon Barg, has her degree in architecture with a concentration in Historic Preservation.
I didn't know that.
Yes. So...
Very good.
And as a matter of fact, she used to work for the company that would probably get that project. So we may not have to hire a consultant, because it might be available to us. So, just so you know.
Good to know. Yeah.
Yeah. Yes. Councilperson Lee, did you want to add anything, questions? Councilperson Lee, did you want to add anything, questions? Okay. I guess my own thought was, you know, I keep going through, I try to approach it very logically, which is, you know, okay, would we ever, what would be our preference? And to me, the preference is that the town, if you sold it, you know, you talk about selling it, why? Then we don't have, then it's not the town's anymore, we lose control of it. So my preference would always be to keep it, but to use it for a useful purpose. And to me, we don't have enough lodges, we don't have enough assembly space. And that might be something where we could create a very, very nice facility, using the front part, you know, the historic part, saving that, but also making it available as a nice venue for events or something like that. Or a lodge, you know, because we have wait lists, you know, we just can't meet our demand. So that's always my thinking.
And it seems like the Dolomite Lodge is maybe most sought after, I'm guessing, I don't know that for a fact, but I believe that to be the case. So that kind of maybe gives an example of what type of facilities you would need to include in an addition, right, as far as how big a kitchen might have to be, or, you know, restroom facilities, that sort of thing.
I mean, we could also look at, you know, you mentioned renting it out, that maybe there is someone out there who'd be interested, I guess. I guess my feeling is, that's a lot of money for us to put in for somebody else to, again, use it.
They'd have to contribute to it somehow, yeah.
Right, so...
Lodge seems like a logical place for it, too, in the town, and it would be nice to have a lodge on this side, you know, down on that Waylon Atlantic Avenue, and of Penfield, too, as well, you know? And especially with all the, what's going, going on in Shadow Pines, with the disc golf and pickleball coming, and, you know, the uses, the walking, the trails. I think that it's a nice fit for that parcel.
You know, but there is something to be said, it'd be nice to be able to have some sort of anchor in the front, like, I know the local history room, it'd be a great place to put it, but you don't want one person there alone, you know? Maybe if some rec staff could be out there, too, to do some of their work that would be involved with the, I don't know, what's going on with Shadow Pines. Somehow have it as a town facility of sorts, it may not be a huge one, but at least have an anchor where there's custodians living there to upkeep, you know, they're not just, it's not just sitting there, because chances are, if we're having it for a lodge, they're going to be using the back end, the new renovated assembly space. I mean, that building's old and it needs to be updated, but it's still a house, it looks like a house. And, you know, what are you going to use in this house? You know, what would be the plans? I'm not sure, but if you had some office space, at least that could be something that could, you don't want to sit there just because it's, 1832 is like a site that no one's using, they're using the back end, so we have to think about that.
Okay.
What's doable. So you've got to fix it, to be able to do that, to be, what you're saying, inside, the accommodations inside, not just, you know, I was concerned about the structural outside and everything, we've got to make sure what that would cost, but yeah, if we're going to do something, we have to consider the inside.
Am I hearing that the preference would be that the town would keep ownership of it and try to find a purpose for it, also to preserve both the interior and exterior?
I would agree to that, yes.
Of just the first...
1832.
Of the 1832 piece.
Yeah, I'm just trying to summarize what I'm hearing.
When we get additional costs from Bergman or consider uses, what does the board feel about putting that financial picture or financial decision as a referendum, similar to how we did with Shadow Pines?
Thoughts?
I don't know if it needs to be in a referendum.
I think, I'd like to...
We need a public hearing.
Could we get some figures, maybe?
Yeah, I would say, I don't know enough information about it, I'm open to anything.
We need to find out how much the cost would be before we could...
Councilperson Ockeden?
No, I'd agree, I think we need more information on costs to make that consideration.
Okay.
No, just to clarify one more thing, I know you mentioned this, kind of saving as much of the inside and out as possible, is that keeping, you know, I guess, as much siding as possible that's in relatively decent shape, and then trying to kind of patch in and match? Or keeping the exterior look as close as possible, but potentially replacing with, you know, modern building materials, you know, still be white, you know, vinyl siding, as have been done with other historic sites within town?
I think so, don't you? Because, you know, that was one thing Shannon did bring up, I didn't know she was an architect by, on her background, but that we can't, as a municipality, get some of the grants that a private residence could to do that kind of renovation, or you do that kind of thing. You have to also be registered, you know, and we're not on the registry for state or national, you know, so even if we wanted to, we couldn't. And if it went to a private, they couldn't yet either, because you have to get on the registry to support it, and you know it'd cost a lot, it'd cost a lot to try to keep it as-is to what you would think an 1832 building. So a little leniency to allow for some modernization, yet keeping the look of the history, I think, would be more economically doable.
I almost think we're looking for multiple pieces of information.
Yes.
The first one is that I think we're in agreement that the back two are not what we're worried about, right? So demolishing the back two. Then it seems like we would need information about the cost of the Clark House being preserved exterior only, and then exterior and interior together, and then also, yeah, I think those would be the two.
Why would you say that separately? Because would you want to just have a shell of it looking nice, but inside you can't use it? I mean, I think we'd need to have both.
No, but... Yeah, but I'm not sure that, I mean, I think that, what if it was, the exterior was saved, but the interior led into something else? Do you know what I'm saying?
Like a potential gutting the interior and saving the exterior?
Just want to know that.
Okay.
So you're talking more of kind of a rehabilitation of the exterior, or exterior and interior? Okay.
And, just for thoroughness, redo it, just replacing, replicating it, the 1832 part.
Okay.
I think we have to be, I think we have to have that information, because I think we have to be thorough in, you know, how much is this costing, what makes the most sense? I don't think we'd be doing our due diligence, but if, do any of the other board members feel differently?
No, I think, I think that's another piece we need, for sure. Because as you get into the exterior, and you start stripping and replacing, and replacing with new materials, at what point have you gone...
Right.
You know, too far, and you're, you more or less have just changed everything you had, anyway, so...
I don't want people to misconstrue what we're, if anyone's watching, you know, what we're trying to say, yeah, we hear what the Historic Preservation Board says, we know what our preference is, but that's not fair to just ignore other things, other options.
We should look at it all.
Now, because these would be kind of an additional scope of services above and beyond, well, Bergman was, I guess, the original contract with them, we've got two options, we can either go off of their additional service rates, or I can request that they put together and provide a, kind of, another proposal for this specific scope of work, is their preference from the board, one way or another.
I can't comment, because this was done before I, before I came, so is there a feeling among some of the board members?
The cost, would it go up if you separate it? Or would it be less expensive just to add on to the additional requests, that contract? I mean, it's a matter of what the contract had.
I mean, really, that's an unknown, I can't tell you, other than the fact, I can say my personal preference would be to get a quote for this kind of specific additional work, and I think Barbara would agree with me.
Just because it's substantially different from the initial scope that was engaged, so it's not really additional work, it's an entirely, almost a different...
It's a new proposal.
Enough project. Then I would say we are obligated to do that.
And really, at that point, we'd know kind of what we're getting into, rather than just a blank check.
I think I'm more comfortable with that.
Because again, we'd, you know, we'd have to, you know, kind of appropriate money for it, so we know what we're doing.
Far more comfortable with a proposal.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Would you reach out to more than just one? You know, is there a benefit that they've been involved, or how would you...
I think it's to their benefit, because of the work that they've done so far, you know, understanding kind of what the structural integrity of the building is, the research that they've done, that they do have a leg up on, you know, other companies that may, well, I could reach out to more, I think other companies would end up coming in higher, you know, as they did in the past, knowing that they're going to have to do additional research that Bergman already, you know, has the knowledge of, just to be able to get to that point.
Yeah, it would seem like this wheel is half-built already.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. All right, you can report back to us on September 14th?
Hopefully. If not, myself, someone else will, yes.
Okay. Is everyone comfortable with how we've given, okay, great. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to discussion of ARPA funds. Ms. Chirdo.
So, as we all know, we had our public hearing last month, and definitely received a lot of input from the public on the improvements at Shadow Pines, some comments on the LED upgrades, not too much on the thoughts for the four corners. So at this point, I don't know if there's more discussion for, you know, to move forward, again, conceptually with these projects. If the board wants to move forward with them, obviously then we will be going through the whole process of doing out public bids and plans, and a lot more detail about what's actually going to happen, but just conceptually to put in the utilities, the parking lot, the necessities at Shadow Pines, and move forward with the pickleball courts, and again, as that kind of progresses, then decide how many exact courts will be, and, you know, some of the other factors that are more in the design phase. But just essentially, if we want to move forward with, just to say, these are the projects we want to target our estimated amounts for out of our ARPA funding, still reserving some for potential other projects down the line.
I was just going to ask if you put that up, and I see Mr. Valentine's putting it up already, your, the focus on here.
Yep, we have the, we received three point, a little over 3.8 million in our ARPA funds. We had estimated Shadow Pines, the utilities, were going to be 1.63, pickleball approximately 370,000, the upgrades to the LED lights at 450,000, improvements at the town center, which was, as we discussed, kind of the stamped concrete and kind of the walkability and approach over there, approximately $100,000. Again, these are kind of our estimates, based on some bird's eye view and big overview of things at this point. But just to know that if we want to move forward, as we all know, being where we've been, that it takes a little longer to keep things moving along, so, with plans and all the things that come into play. So we're almost on September now, so to be able to at least move forward on some things.
Okay. Before I open it up for discussion amongst board members, I do just want to highlight again how these were selected, because I think that there were some questions about why these four, just so the public knows, we, the town keeps a running list of capital projects going out five years, and so we're constantly looking at that list, saying, okay, what needs to be repaired, what needs to be upgraded, replaced, et cetera. And we took a look at that, and we said, okay, you know, here's a good starting point, here are some suggestions, where might we be able to get funding from another source? And if we thought we could get funding from another source, we wouldn't necessarily want to use the ARPA funds for that. We did want to make sure that we chose things that were benefiting a wide variety of people that were spread out geographically throughout the town, mindful of the continuing growth of the town, and so we took all of that into consideration when we developed this list. We have also did bring this to work session previously, as well as, I wrote a supervisor's column about it, and we also had a public hearing. So those were our methods of communication for that. All right, opening it up for discussion by board members.
Okay, I'll start. LED lights, I think, that one, that's almost going to save us money in the long run, right? As far as the lighting and the cost effectiveness?
Yep.
Is there an estimate on how much that would save the town?
I don't have numbers in front of me, I want to say, at least on the energy, the utility bills and energy savings, I want to say it's roughly 60%.
60%.
Yep. Now, that's exciting, because that's, you know, we're getting money to save money, right? It's a good project.
You know, again, now, these numbers were also off of our estimated number of lights, we do have an accurate number of lights, so they're going to change slightly, but I guess it's kind of close enough in the grand scheme of things. You know, it would also save us money, again, you know, if they're, if we have poles that are hit by vehicles, for whatever reason, you know, we will still have a maintenance cost to replace those, you know, that wouldn't be covered by any, you know, the warranty with this, but just the routine, you know, I guess, replacements and maintenance for, you know, a light that goes out by having them all new, they should last a while, and not have to, you know...
Right. Would any of this, like, add any kind of additional poles, if you wanted?
So this did not incorporate adding any additional lights, it was merely replacing all of the...
Existing poles.
Existing fixtures that we have.
Well, still, that's a good one. And as far as I'm concerned, the pickleball, you know, that has been something we've been talking about for so long, and as much as the pickleball is very embraced by the community, also getting the facilities in there, because we don't know with the Clark House, how soon if we go ahead and have bathrooms there one day and do something, that's down the road. This could come faster, and all the people that utilize that park now, you know, it's not a park, but it's been used as one for just golf now, we got, and we're going to have the mountain bikes, and then we have an orienteering, and, you know, we got the cross country and all that, you need facilities there for all these people, and dog walkers, right, Debbie? They're all out there. And so I think getting all that infrastructure down there is so important, and I'm really supportive of that, and I think the pickleball court's important, too, and if we can, you know, eventually add the playground, all that, it'll be really good for that area. And the, so I'm totally supportive on that. And what you said, we don't have to say we want 12 or 16 right off, right, for courts for pickleball. It's a matter of, after you've started doing these, the infrastructure, and you're taking an extra look and see what can fit and all that. So that's nothing we have to set in stone right now. And the third one, the four corners, well, the four corners is limited, I guess, for the people to drive up and down 441 and see it, but at the same time, you know, we put a sign up years ago, "Welcome to Penfield," trying to make it more friendly, and because the history, it's a historical area, but it's kind of lost a lot of its ambiance over the years because of all the, being a main road going through town, and if we could do things to, maybe slow traffic as much as to make it more inviting, and you have the, like you're saying, the crosswalks and everything, to make it look more villagey for, no other word to use, but I think that feel would be important, and it'll, really, it will affect a lot of people that have been, you know, concerned that it doesn't have the historical feel anymore that it could have. So in my mind, I support all three of the applications, we have our recommendations, and it appeared that the people that came out did as well, so I would, you know, I'll put on that that's how I feel.
Thank you. I do think the phrase you're looking for is improve the aesthetic.
Yes. That's it, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other board members who would like to contribute, ask questions, discuss?
Did you want that?
No, go ahead. I'll just echo what Councilperson Cole stated there. We've, you know, had this out there for a bit now, and the famous word, soak time, I think we've done that, received some feedback, but I think these are three good areas, you know, to spend the first portion of our ARPA funds, obviously there's still another section that we'll address later, but I'm in favor of these projects.
And I would just echo what both Councilperson Cole and Ockeden said, and, you know, and to your credit, too, Madam Supervisor, you know, I know one of the things that you've done has been, put this on the forefront for, it's been in your column, I believe it was, a couple of months ago, I mean, I think we started talking about this quite a few months ago. And I, you know, so people have had an opportunity, I know it's always, you know, it's sometimes people think that they didn't... I know it's always, you know, it's, it's sometimes people think that they didn't, you know, they didn't know about something, but I think there's, as a, as a resident, too, of our community, you know, we have a responsibility to, to, to look at, look in, you know, inquire about things, that we, we want to know what's going on as well. So, I, I would say we're doing a great, and the town has done a good job of communicating it out, hopefully that the residents, I mean, not everybody will probably be thrilled with all three of the, I, for one, think there's a little bit of something for everyone here, the lights, I mean, you know, we've talked about them, the need for them, the LED and the savings, and I think people can appreciate that, especially in this day and age with the cost going up immensely to us as, as, as residents personally. So, I think that, I just want to, you know, hand it to you, to the town, to everybody in the town here who's been open about, in taking the responses and the, and the comments from the residents. So, again, keep them coming, because we, as, you know, mentioned, this is a portion of the ARPA funds. We still have more, more to come, and hopefully that people, we're, we're willing to listen to everyone's input on things, and we want to move ahead and do the right thing and use these funds, like, we have to use them by, we have to have them allocated, right? Barbara, by 2023, we have to start moving on them, but we have to have them allocated by
2024.
2024.
Yep.
So, we gotta
By '26.
So, and, and as things move slowly, but we want to get moving on these projects. So, I thank you.
Thank you. Councilperson Lee, I know you had asked several questions at the last work session.
And I think some of the questions, and just to summarize, I had questions as to how, with respect to the site plan, in terms of additional costs for regular maintenance of not just the hard surfaces, but for that entire infrastructure of the parking lot, mowing around the facility, you know, refuges and general maintenance of what that would do to the budget if it's not already allocated from the ARPA funds.
Okay. So, to your question, I know we talked about hard surface, having just be on a regular maintenance schedule, the pickleball courts. In terms of mowing, that is actually, we've already been paying for that right along. I want to say that it's about $30,000.
So, we have not been mowing, I guess, the area where the pickleball courts are, you know, shown to go on, on the conceptual plan.
Right.
That is just something that we've been kind of doing, a little brush hogging along the actual trails themselves.
Okay.
It's not something that's currently, you know, accounted for within the budget, but, you know, again, depending on the size and the scope of how big of an area we, you know, want mowed around a parking lot, around, you know, pickleball courts, whether they're, you know, a few to start with, if it's all, what other amenities are there, what, what the actual total acreage is. Our mowing, our contractual mowing company does have a locked-in price for this year and then following four, so I know what that rate is. Again, depending on the frequency, whether it's weekly or if it's bi-weekly mowing.
Okay, so it's a little bit of both, it sounds like. So, there is some already being mowed that will continue to be mowed.
There's, there's portions of Shadow Pines that are being mowed. The area around the pickleball itself would be something additional that would need to be accounted for.
And in terms of maintaining the parking lot, we do have to plow it in the winter already.
Yep.
So, we've already
We, we are plowing kind of the parking, parking lot closest to the Clark House. You know, again, for, for one, that we're going to go in for pickleball and any other amenities, you know, up at the kind of north portion of the property, that would be something additional, but it's certainly doable.
Okay.
So, I, I just, general concerns that weren't readily apparent to me in the site plan or in, in the allocation of, of these proposed funds. And I, I know that for some of the other projects that residents and others have raised, for example, LaSalle's Landing and such, I guess my concern there is to, to rely on a grant opportunity and make a decision without that being awarded for an immediate need I have concerns for. And so, if we don't, if we are not awarded those additional grants for projects that we've identified as immediate infrastructure needs, can other parts of the budget absorb those additional costs without additional burden to taxpayers?
Okay, so, I, I think if I'm understanding correctly your question, it's, you know, we're, we're kind of hedging our bets that, you know, we put in some grant applications, and if we receive them, great, but if we don't, and we know that these are critical needs, can we pay for them? Right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, without additional burden to taxpayers.
My answer to that is, I believe we can. We can start looking at, you know, Recreation Trust Fund or something like that. Barbara, do you want to add anything to that?
So, I guess I was a little bit confused. So, other projects like LaSalle's?
Yes.
If we don't get funding for that, obviously, we still have, we'll, we still have ARPA money available, which was part of the reason we didn't target it all, over a million still left. But as far as doing improvements at LaSalle's Landing, that is another project that we did discuss initially for ARPA funds. And it is a project that's been on the radar and using Rec Trust or, you know, other general fund money to pay for that. We could do that if that's, if that's a decision the town makes as we move forward. And as I said, we not, not allocating all the ARPA funds right off the bat. If, if there's a, a different need that arises in the next year, it gives us more room to move things around and reprioritize if necessary. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so I, I guess that's, you know, my concern, that we will be earmarking, the, there's just a lot of variables. And so, at least for this first phase, the Shadow Pines infrastructure takes majority of the, those fees, and so, those are just some of my concerns. It's hard, it's hard for me to get comfortable with the commitment to a project where there are a lot of still financial components that are undetermined or uncertain, and then to commit to that, you know, for, for all other residents. So, and then just general hesitancy, which I've shared in past sessions, that I, I know that there's been ample opportunity for the public, but seeing that as of recently, we've seen an uptick, or certainly, I've received an uptick from direct contact from members, from residents. You know, I, I would feel more comfortable with another outreach effort, so that if there are others, other residents who would like to propose other projects for consideration, that we give that opportunity.
What would the outreach effort look like?
So, I, you know, I don't, I, I would recommend something like a postcard mailing or something that is more visible. I don't know how frequently people read the supervisor's column, or what the readers, the scope of that reach is. And then, of course, you know, public participation in, you know, these, these nights like public hearings, I think generally is low attendance. The contingency by the pickle, those in favor of pickleball, I would say, was an aberration, and it was just very, a very dominant and important voice, but not being able to hear as many others.
So, my only concern with that is that we would be deviating from our procedure of, of setting a notice with public hearing. You know, we have to have, have that published so many days beforehand. That's published in the, in paper, it's also on our website, et cetera. And I'm not sure we could do a postcard mailing for every single public hearing going forward either, so I want to be able to sustain that.
Sure. I, no, I meant for, I, I wouldn't really, oh, I guess we'd have to schedule a public hearing. It was just a, a thought. And, and before I forget, if Pete is still present, there were some other regulatory concerns that I had raised previously, and I know it's been at least reviewed by council. It's the recommendation by the town attorney that, in conjunction with their comptroller, that the proposed projects and allocated funding meet the regulatory approval for such funds. Should there be a federal audit?
I think that was a question that Dick looked at. I haven't looked at that. That was, so I, I, I mean, I could talk to Dick about what he looked at, but I don't have any, you know, I, I don't know what he looked at for that.
And also, that said, we, these, these projects are very similar to what other towns are doing as well. There isn't anything that's an outlier, I would say.
No, they, they definitely fall within acceptable use from the federal regulations.
Right. And there were two, kind of two levels of that. One was if you received more than $10 million in ARPA funds, which we most certainly did not. And it, there was a lot more latitude if you received less than that, and we fell into that latter category.
Correct.
Is that the audit concern? Is that, that the funds would be used for something inappropriate, or is there something in particular that, I mean, if you wanted to talk to me offline about a particular concern, I'd be happy to look at it in addition to, you know, what we've talked about here?
Sure. Sorry, I'm trying to, trying to think quickly. We can, we can certainly discuss offline, but at least wanted to make my concerns more public for transparency, is just the, the way I read, at least the, the proposed legislation and then comments coming out of the Senate, were for existing infrastructure needs that would have been otherwise delayed as a result of COVID, or as a result of the, the loss of potential revenue, or revenue as resulting from the pandemic. So, just definitions as to what, what the existing infrastructure would have been. So, for new projects, I was just a little bit hesitant that it would meet all of the regulatory approval.
My understanding from
I'm not, not trying to read Senate comments into the record tonight at all. I think I'd put myself to sleep also.
I thought I heard that these were projects that were existing on a list already. I thought, so it's not like they're, oh, we've got money, now we're going to figure out what to do with it?
No.
I think, my understanding is that there were, there's a, like, the town has a list of priority projects, and when there's an opportunity to do them, they would take, you know, they would take that opportunity. And I think my understanding is that that's what these projects are all for, including the pickleball, I think.
Yes.
That was part of the concept plan for Shadow Pines, I believe.
Yeah, Citizens Group.
Yeah, pickleball has been discussed for at least three years, I believe. The LED was also brought up in '21, and four corners improvements has been an ongoing discussion.
And in the final regulations, because there has been many iterations of what the rules and regulations would be, and the final one, as, as the supervisor said, if you really received less than $10 million, they, the government, the federal government said that that can be determined as revenue lost due to the impact of COVID. That being said, that revenue then could be used for general governmental services, which is a very, very broad term and very
Right.
Big umbrella to cover. And essentially, what they're saying is, revenue that you didn't, money that you didn't make in the past couple of years, that you would have spent, instead of spending your, your own money, your, you know, that you didn't really get, we're giving you this money to spend on things that you wanted to do, improvements in your community, infrastructure, what have you. So, it's basically, they're supplementing what, in their minds, we lost. So, we would have done these projects had we made this money the past couple of years. So, and that, as, as Candace said, in the beginning, there was a lot more gray, it wasn't very clear, and there was more stipulations on, we actually had to calculate, there was a, a counterfactual calculation as to how much revenue you lost. I was doing that when, all, last year, that was fun. So, then, then because there was so much pushback, that's when they decided, okay, less than $10 million, spend it on general governmental services, what you've determined is best for your community, coming out of the pandemic, what's going to serve your community in the future. And that was, you know, the projects that we've identified as being impactful for a variety of reasons, of health as well, but long-term impact to the community, so.
That address your concern?
I, I think I still just have a, a general hesitation, being very risk averse and then regulatory-minded, if, if we were, always being defensive of a potential audit. And so, the balance of the projects is still a concern to me.
Okay. I am hearing that the other three board members do want to go forward, and I am of the mindset that we have enough information and, and did, did talk with the public and would prefer to go forward tonight as well. So, when we take a vote, you can, you know, certainly voice. Okay. You want to, does anyone want to make a motion that we memorialize this at the next meeting through a resolution?
I'll, I'll move then. For a second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilperson Draw and a second by Councilperson Cole, that we prepare a resolution memorializing these projects as earmarked for ARPA funds, and, and think this satisfies the ARPA requirement of institutionalizing this somehow, correct?
Correct, it's a, it's a best practice recommendation, so
Okay.
That would be mine.
All right, so a roll call vote.
Cinty?
Aye.
Draw?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Lee?
I want to abstain.
Ockenden?
Aye.
Four ayes, one abstain.
Candace, I'm not sure you can abstain. Usually, it's, it's if you have a conflict of interest.
This is to memorialize for vote at a legislative session, then?
Yeah.
Okay, then I will vote yes for that.
Okay.
Four ayes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Moving on to Action Item C. Cannabis Retail Dispensary Law Follow-Up. Thank you for your patience. Ms. Ivors?
Good evening. So, we had the public hearing last week, and I wanted to make sure that we had a chance to follow up. I know board members have been reviewing the draft local law, and that the, there were comments received. I'm not sure if members of the board received additional feedback, either in, through formal communication or just in general feedback from constituents, but this is a time where if we were going to talk about any potential changes, modifications, any adjustments to the draft local law, now would be a good time for us to do that, so that we could prepare a final draft, because the, the local law needs to be in 100% sort of final form before it can be adopted. So, we're going to make sure we identify those changes, if any, and then go from there.
Carrie, I'll, I'll start. I, I thought some of the comments in trying to distinguish places where children, I'm sorry, I, I'm trying to remember what they
Gather or gather.
Yes, I, I understand the ambiguity that was raised by
Yep.
Council for that business, but I think the spirit of the law is clear to me that these other places, schools, you know, that it should be read as of a like or similar situation, of a, of a like kind, it's analogous enough that I think it should be captured there, and to distinguish that childcare facilities are somehow separated or distinct than a school, because of, I think, comment that was raised was fencing, or the traffic is contained, is not persuasive to me. So, if we can please clarify that, so that the, the section that describes childcare facilities is more analogous, or that, that they are, that they are well married together? Does that make sense?
I, I understand, I think I understand your comment. I think one of the things in hearing the comment, my, my preference would be to sort of clear up some of that, what might be difficult to interpret
Sure.
Language. I think the point about childcare centers is that unlike parks, or schools, or playgrounds, children going to daycare generally are being dropped off, they're not roaming to and from. And so, that might be the only, the only reason why daycare is, could potentially be treated differently than differently than, um, than the other types of facilities where schools and playgrounds, places where children could come to and from on their own accord and not be accompanied by a parent or an adult. So that would be my only thought to share with the board and to see how the board feels in terms of, you know, and I would, and certainly welcome and invite the, our town attorney to jump in as well.
So I, I mean, I did have a, so if you, I guess, one thing, and before we leave that topic, if you wanted to clarify what you mean, if you, you know, if you want to include daycare, childcare facilities in this restriction where you have schools, then you should do so. The cannabis law talks about school grounds and then incorporates school grounds from the education law as its definition. And that includes some things like nursery schools and public and private schools. And so you may want to think about how you define schools also to, so it's at least consistent with how it is in the, the cannabis law statute enabling legislation. Another change that I would, I already pass this on to Carrie, but I think it would be better to take in that paragraph where you're talking about the minimum distance, to take the, in C, in one C where they're talking about how you measure that distance, I think for kind of a consistency and kind of a statutory construction, I would probably move that up to the minimum distance at the top so that it's, that's how you would apply the distance for all of those rather than just leaving it in that it invites an ambiguity that you maybe measure it a different way for the other two categories in A and C. So I've already talked to Carrie about that, but that's, that's one of the changes that I do recommend changing. And then, you know, however you want to define, you know, if you want to change the definition a little bit about school and, and clarify where you want to put daycares and, and childcare centers.
Are you saying like the definitions, you could have under definitions and say schools, nursery schools, daycare facilities?
Well, that's one way to, well, it's, so actually, I mean, I don't think any of these are defined unless they're defined, because this will be part of the zoning code.
Right.
So the zoning code does define certain things. And, and all I'm saying about the way in the enabling legislation that, that talks about this, they, they have a restriction that says you can't allow one of these dispensaries to be closer than 500 feet to a school. And they, they don't say school, they say, I think, school grounds. And then they say as defined in the ed law. And then you look to the ed law and it's a little bit of a broader definition of school, public and private schools, nursery schools are included.
Is daycare in there too?
No, it's not, because I was looking to see if it was. In fact, I wonder if I have that, just bear with me a moment. I don't think I printed that out. I didn't bring that with me tonight, but it's, um-
So you're suggesting that we change the wording to give a better definition of what schools mean?
Yeah, well, you could do that, and I think, I think there's two separate things. So that's one thing you could do, is to better define schools. What do you mean by school? Is it just, I mean, so for example, if you look at this and you see school, is a nursery school included?
Okay.
I don't know, unless it's, I, I guess it could be, but, but I think you, any opportunity you can take to clarify it-
Okay.
-and make it more clear what you're trying to restrict.
Does that give you direction, Carrie?
I think it does, and I'll certainly work with, with the attorney to make sure that the, those changes are as clear and as, you know, sort of mitigate any potential challenges for interpretation. I think we want to try and make the regulation, regulations as clear as possible.
Do you, do I understand though, I don't know that I've got, are, is the board saying maybe that they, where do they want to put childcare? In the same category as schools or something different?
I think so.
Yes, yes.
Right, because it's, it's-
Absolutely.
-how far away children to a dispensary, so-
Okay.
-children are in the daycare and childcare.
Okay. Any other comments, councilperson Lee?
No, I, I, I quickly looked up the definition for school under zoning law, and it, and it does refer to the education law, but it's in a way that it's broadly, and I, broadly to include any type of institution that conducts, you know, scheduled curriculum or study. So I, I think it does, I think the intent, and again, the spirit was to incorporate childcare facilities or any, essentially where children are congregated. And so I don't, I'm, I'm not persuaded by like how children are dropped off there or the mode of transportation or whether or not it's walkable, walkable for children. I think the spirit of the law is to protect the children from such a dispensary. So that, I, I agree with the proposed change.
Okay, and I'm hearing the other board members agree with you on that. Is there anything else you wanted to add? Okay, are there any other board members who want to comment or question?
You, are you?
Go ahead, councilperson Draw.
I have a question, and I'm not sure whether it's something that, you know, maybe Carrie, these, the hours of operation, are they set by standards of New York State? Can we, do those nine to nine, Monday through Saturday, and 11 to six, Sundays, are those hours that have to be adhered to? Or do we have some flexibility in those, or?
So we put these in, I think that we're, we're putting in the hours of operation as part of our ability to control the time, place, and manner. And that's what the town, local municipalities are allowed to do with their local laws. And so I would, we were actually, these are, these are, these hours are less than some of the other conditionally use, conditionally permitted uses, but still reasonable in terms of allowing the business to be open for a period of time. But if you wanted to adjust hours, that's certainly something the town board could do.
So the only thing that I guess I would add to that is that I've noticed now most liquor stores are now closing earlier than nine o'clock. Eight o'clock is, is, I believe, most-
Is that a staffing issue, or?
You know, I don't, no, but when I'm, they're, they're closing earlier, as well as, you know, on Sundays, a lot of places are closing earlier.
Okay.
And I guess I would just wonder that, I mean, nine o'clock, I mean, you know, maybe that's, you know, maybe that's my age showing me that you, you know, I think nothing good happens after nine o'clock. I used to think it happened after 10:00, but, but I guess, my, I know, in all seriousness, I was just wondering, nine o'clock, you know, I don't know, is that, is that something that, you know, that we won't even talk, you know, that to me, when I saw the hours, I was wondering if there was a, you know, nine to nine is a pretty long day.
Is that normal though?
Is it normal?
They wouldn't have to be open, they wouldn't have to be open those hours. We're not dictating those with the hours that need.
Correct, right.
We're indicating that they couldn't operate outside of those hours.
Right. But I'm saying I'm not sure I want them open that, that late on a, on a, on a Saturday night, honestly, at nine o'clock. But that's just me, and I might be, you know, everybody might have different, you know, opinions on that. And Sunday, I thought 11 to six is a long day on a Sunday to have, but that might be just my opinion. I was wondering what, what the hours of how anybody else, how, how other towns maybe were, or how, you know, what the hours of other establishments are.
So I'd be, I'd be curious what other, the other board members think about that. I also would just say that something good's happening after nine o'clock because we're here and we're working on this, so.
No, I, I don't have a problem with it. I think, I think what you're saying about things closing, it's just a matter of the, right now, there's people that can't get enough staff to work and, you know, I like what Carrie's saying, you're setting the parameters, you know, you have to have some kind of numbers put in there and, uh-
But I think councilperson Draw would like to see a smaller window. Is anyone else, what are the other board members thinking?
Maybe I'm a one-off, you know, I just was wondering.
Carrie, is it, is that consistent with our liquor stores and things? Is that, or is, is it different than those?
I think there, if you look around, I, I will share with you then, in developing the regulations, I looked at other states that have had legalized marijuana dispensaries or cannabis dispensaries. And so this was consistent with other states. I, I look primarily at Massachusetts. They have a lot of towns that are similar in size and sort of general makeup as the town of Penfield. So that was a good sort of source for case studies. And these hours seem to be relatively consistent. I think the Sunday hours, I, I actually, for the proposal for Penfield, scaled them back to what some other towns had folks allowed to open a little bit early on a Sunday or a little bit later on a Sunday. But this seemed consistent with other business types like liquor stores. And I think in Monroe County, you'll find a range, like for, I spent, for a liquor store, you'll find a range of hours. Many of the stores, Monday through Saturday are open until, or some are open until eight, some used to be open until nine, now they're open only until eight. Some are open until nine, there are a couple that are open until 9:30 or 10:00. But, you know, sort of, it varies from town to town and from location to location.
And then I guess just one more point, I know that you can't, you can't sell alcohol on Sundays till noon anywhere, can you? I mean-
8:00 AM.
Pardon?
I don't, I don't, 8:00 AM for beer-
On Sunday? On Sundays?
On Sunday, it's, at Wegmans, you can't buy alcohol, meaning beer or whatever other alcoholic beverages they sell-
But Lisa's, the, the liquor stores don't open till noon as well, correct?
Um, I'm not sure, I can double check.
I just wondered.
What were you going to say, Mr. Tate?
It might be regulated by the alcohol beverage control.
The state liquor authority.
Yeah.
I, I believe while they're, while most don't, they're, they're not restricted or prohibited from opening until noon, they could open sooner.
Okay. We want to ask, can you know that? Teasing.
Part, part of a change with sports games and-
Got it.
-tailgating a year or two ago.
Understood, understood.
But, but to your point, Debbie, just looking at their site, they're Sunday 12 to 6:00, so maybe it's their choice, is what we're hearing perhaps. Is there a specific recommendation on the hours that you would propose? Yeah, is there something specific?
You know, I guess, when I looked at that and I was looking specifically what liquor stores are doing, they're closing at eight, now maybe it is because of COVID. I was told in a couple, I have frequented a couple, that it is because, I mean, business, you know, it slows down, people are back home and everything after eight o'clock. Personally, I mean, if that, if I was, but you know, I would go with consensus, what everybody agrees with. I, I guess I like to late, and I probably wouldn't open until noon on Sunday if we have to do Sunday. Now, if, if that's how it is, but I understand, I'm not gonna, I just was making a point, asking, really just wanted to ask a question.
No, no, that's appreciated.
No, yeah.
I kind of go with Carrie, did all that research about what other towns, comparable towns were doing, and it's like, well, yeah, that'd be consistent.
I mean, I actually wouldn't disagree with having hours of operation start at noon on Sunday, just for consistency. But Carrie, do you think, is there any other research, any other information we can get?
We certainly can, I'm just quickly, you know, I would, I wouldn't want to trust my Googling ability on the fly, what I'd be happy to do is share with you the, I'm happy to email the board, the state liquor authority regulations as it relates to hours, if that would be information that's helpful in updating the hours of operation proposed for our local law.
I think it would be helpful to have that information. I'm sorry, go ahead, councilperson Lee.
No, it's, it's okay, go ahead.
I think it would be helpful to have the information.
Is it guideline? We don't have, because this is all new to us.
I agree, that'd be nice for consistency and we're kind of comparing.
And we just want to be really careful, you know, we, unfortunately, you know, you don't necessarily get a second.
Right.
So we want to just be moving carefully. Councilperson Lee, I cut you off, I'm sorry. Okay, is there anything else?
I was going to say, it's not a, a state license or state regulation at noon.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm looking right now at the, I'm on the state liquor authority's website, and it appears that the regulations vary by county. And so the hours of operation for restaurants, bars, and taverns, hours of operation and sales for grocery and convenience stores, and then liquor and wine stores, weekdays, they, hours of operation in Monroe County can be from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. And on Sunday, they're counting Saturday as part of weekdays, on Sunday it is anywhere from noon to 9:00 PM.
I like the idea of keeping it consistent with the county.
I do too.
So would you want it to be noon, then? We should change 11:00 AM to noon?
Yes.
Okay, and keep it at 6:00 PM for the end time for our Sunday?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll note that change.
Nothing later, yeah.
That sounds good, it's consistent.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
The only other area, just jumping to a different category, I guess, would be the zoning districts. You know, we've chatted about that a little bit. I still struggle with it just a touch, but I don't see an easy answer or solution to some of my, some of my concerns, but, you know, that's just an area I'm still kind of trying to absorb. Supervisor Cinty, you just kind of referenced it, you only get a chance to do this right once. And I don't, you know, I guess I'm, I'd like to take more of a conservative approach and start out, you know, slower. We don't know where this whole initiative is going to go, we don't know where, where these dispensaries, how popular they're going to become, where the industry is going to take us here, it's still early to say. So again, although I don't have a great solution to my concerns, but I guess I just throw it out there for any other comments on the three proposed districts as they're stated currently.
Well, I look at it this way, it's always easier to add something than it is to take away. I don't know how the other board members are feeling about that.
I would concur with what Councilman Akden had said, and looking at these three areas, is there a way for us, maybe this is something that I have to ask our attorney or Carrie, can, could we go to, could we start in with one area?
You couldn't, you could start with, you'd have to be very careful about starting with just light industrial because it's such a small zoning district that you, we could find ourselves guilty of zoning it out by de facto because there aren't enough viable development sites in that area. So if you wanted to limit, I would indicate, I would lean toward keeping it with general business and light industrial. And perhaps if you wanted to start more conservatively, we could remove limited business district from the, from the list of available districts.
The standard, I was just going to say, the standard is, I mean, that's, Carrie's right, I mean, because the standard, I think, is like unreasonably impractical to, to do it. So it would be like, you say, oh yeah, you can come in, but then we're not going to allow it really in any zoning district that, where it makes sense, so. So that's the concern, and you really don't know what the answer is going to be until you're challenged. I mean, you can kind of, a sense, and it is, light industrial is, is a small district. I think they had the map up there earlier, I think Mr. Valentine had it up there and it kind of showed, I think that's in the, the blue there.
Yep.
You know, the only other thing that, when I was looking at some materials today, but it, it would take a little more study, I think, is, is whether or not you, you know, you could do some type of, maybe like an overlay district or something as a, as a way to limit it in some way, but, you know, have it go across districts maybe, that's a, that's a possibility, but, you know.
How would that look?
Yeah.
It would?
So, you know, it could be, it would be, I just, so I shouldn't, I, I mean, I only really started looking at that issue as a possibility today, and so it could look however you wanted it to look. It like could be something less than the full general business, for example, it could go- It could go, you know, across general business and light industrial, if there was a place in town where that made sense. I mean, that probably requires a little bit more study, because it's like, now you're really kind of, in some ways, creating a new district of sorts, but...
I'm not sure we have the time for that.
That's the concern I would have with doing it that way, rather than, you know, you could always do that later if you, you know...
I was just going to ask.
So what would happen is, in general terms, if somebody got approved in a property, and then you changed the zoning code, it would really be like a pre-existing non-conforming use in that location. You know, if that was then excluded from where you wanted it to be.
What do you think, what does the board think about just removing the limited business district from it to start with, keeping it at general business and light industrial, and then, I think, down the line, maybe looking at a cannabis overlay district, but I just am not sure that there's time for that, given we want to get this out sooner rather than later.
Right, because you want to beat those...
Correct. Thoughts?
I would be okay with that, with the understanding that we task Attorney Wyshaw with that as a review going forward. For further comment?
See, that's the last time you're going to suggest something.
I know. All you had to do is mention it.
I would agree, yeah.
I like taking, if we're going to take off anything, the limited business, you know, so often it's like a transition between...
Right, residential.
Residential.
Right.
And you really want that as far away from residential as possible. It's best to be in a general use, I would think.
Councilperson Lee, what are your thoughts?
It's fine with me.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I agree, I would...
Okay. So the plan forward, Kerry, could you walk us through that?
Yep.
Thank you.
I'm glad, I'm happy to do that. So, based on the commented feedback from tonight, I will prepare with our town attorney's guidance and assistance, updated draft local law for your, for the town board's review. That updated local law will be published on the town's website. It will be posted anywhere that the original local law was posted, available in the clerk's office for review and comment. So that, that updated version is out, needs to be out and in your possession for, and in final form, at least 10 days before it is voted upon. So we'll look at the calendar, once we have a final version of the local law out and in the world and in front of the town board, mind you, that will be, have already been blessed by the town attorney, then we will figure out what the next available legislative meeting is available for you to vote on the resolution adopting the local law.
Okay, do we have to have another public hearing?
You don't, because the comments that, the changes that we're making are related to the feedback received at that public hearing, and you're not making any substantive changes. You're not, you know, you're not making, and certainly I would defer to our attorney's guidance on that, but my understanding is another public hearing is not required, but your, it needs to be posted out and available for public viewing prior to being adopted.
Yeah, we'll confirm that. The, and then if you made any other changes after it was in so-called final form, then the clock starts again.
Got it.
But I'll confirm that too on the...
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Great. We'll move on then to a request for a hold harmless agreement at 135 Farm Brook Drive. Mr. Valentine, thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Board. So this is, let me just pull it up on the screen, this is kind of a cleanup effort. So 135 Farm Brook, and I can pull up the application. So their property, as we have it on the screen, have their house, they've got a small, and it kind of, it's 135, excuse me, is here. The survey is showing a small pad area, so there was a pre-existing basketball court that is in our storm sewer easement. It's been there, I think, since 1992, based on what the property has. It was there when they bought the property. I do have pictures of it, so this is our catch basin. Going down this line is where our storm pipe is, so this is the questionable basketball pad that's in there. We've traversed it before, we've gotten to our storms who have done the work that we've needed to do, so I don't see an issue with it in existing within the easement, it's been there since the 90s. So this is kind of a, just a cleanup effort to acknowledge it's there, have a hold harmless agreement if the board is open to that. And then, obviously, then going forward, you know, that'll be in place, and if it ever is an issue, we remove the basketball court if we ever had to dig up that storm pipe. Obviously, it's at their cost to put it back if they so choose.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments by any of the board members? It's fairly straightforward. Councilperson Lee, any questions?
No.
Okay. All right, so I'd be looking for a motion for, to prepare a resolution for the supervisor to sign a hold harmless agreement. Would that be correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll move that.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilperson Draw and a second by Councilperson Ockenden. May we have a roll call vote?
Cinty?
Aye.
Draw?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
All aye.
Okay, Mr. Valentine, you're still on the hot seat, request to abandon an easement at 7 Peter Rock.
Yes, so this came up, and I'll pull up the address, and I've got the map. This came up earlier, or last week. We had a resident come in and request, 37, 7 is over here, so in the Silverwoods neighborhood, new owners at 7 want to put a fence in their backyard. We pulled up our easements, as part of our easements, as we always check, it shows a storm sewer easement running along their property line. So I said, okay, you need to get a hold harmless agreement from the town board. Subsequent to that, further conversations, you know, with them, with the actual developer of the subdivision, and consult with the sewer department. They went out, checked, and found that, actually, the storm sewer no longer was never installed in that location. So as part of the original development, they decided and relocated the storm sewer main further to the south, which is in this easement here, which discharges into the pond. So this easement is not needed anymore. There is no pipe coming out of this pipe, going into this wooded area, and then going around. So kind of backed into what originally was going to be a hold harmless agreement request before the board, is an actual easement abandonment. It's not needed. Talked to the sewer department, obviously with no pipe in it, it's not needed by them. And again, contacted the builder of the development and said, is there something we're missing, something that is needed for? He goes, no, as we were building it, it just made more sense and lined up better that they could then extend that pipe and service these backyards, so it became a flow-through, so this easement was used in lieu of this easement, so...
That's Mr. Viola, right?
Yes. So Spock spoke with Dan Viola earlier this week and confirmed that with him.
I want to say that on behalf of the town board, we appreciate the town staff's dedication to finding out the answer. It certainly sounds like you did your diligence.
Before we abandon any easement, just want to make sure we're not, you know, getting rid of it if it's needed, or, you know, it appeared wasn't, but the sewer department was, you know, willing and able to go out, they popped the manhole, checked it, you know, made sure if it was out there or not, but we take seriously, you know, anytime you want to abandon an easement, make sure we're covered, have a new easement, or if there's not a reason for it, that we do that properly.
Thank you. I know this sounds straightforward, but are there any questions for the board members? Okay. All right. Then you are looking for a resolution, you're looking for a motion to prepare a resolution to abandon this easement, correct?
Correct, yes.
So moved.
Second.
Second, that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll give that to Councilperson Lee. So a motion by Councilperson Ockenden, second by Councilperson Lee. And a roll call vote, please?
Cinty?
Aye.
Draw?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
All aye.
Okay. Sidewalk waiver request.
So this is 1700 Baird Road, located approximately at the corner of Atlantic and Baird. Sorry, yourself, Baird Road is here, Atlantic at the top of the screen. At the time that Mr. Scorsa came in to develop his property, he put his house on the property, came before the town, he had plans to possibly put some frontage lots along Atlantic, possibly put some frontage lots along the Baird Road frontage, but didn't have plans for it at the time. So I think this back was in 2012, to my recollection. At the time, the town board basically tabled action on taking a sidewalk waiver, didn't know what the development was, there was nothing planned for it. Subsequent to that, we have installed sidewalks along the other side of the road, so Baird Road has them along the other side all the way down. So now, he's coming in for one house in this location. I have the sketch, and I can bring that up. So the filed plat map we just received shows the one new house here, frontage, here is his existing house. My apologies, that kind of turned the map on it. Here's the existing house we were looking at that's in the middle of the property. He's carving off one lot here, so seeking a sidewalk waiver for this frontage piece on that end. There are no other existing sidewalks along that side of Baird Road, so it seems reasonable that we have sidewalks on the other side. You know, whether the board was, you know, amenable to that, would pay into the sidewalk fund. Did our normal calculation, pulled up his lot, his lot is 163.87 feet wide, based on the plat map. There is no interior frontage, so based on the current price of sidewalks, our sidewalk waiver policy is 50% of the construction cost with a cap of $5,000. So with that calculation, you know, the total cost to construct the sidewalks would be $7,700. Half of that is what our waiver fee is, so he would owe $3,891.91 into the sidewalk fund. That's below that $5,000 cap that we've instituted. So, one, is the board supportive of granting a waiver, and then, two, is that the fee that you would assess for...
Is that the PRC recommendation?
Yes.
Right, it doesn't seem to make sense to have sidewalks on both sides of the street like that, particularly when there's only the one property. Any questions by board members?
No, I think it's all reasonable. I would move that we pursue this sidewalk waiver request at that number.
So I, on that one, we don't need a resolution, we've just done it through the minutes in the past. I will send Mr. Scorsa a letter issuing that, and then that fee would be due at such time he pulls his building permit for that lot, so he then pays the sidewalk waiver fee, and that'll go into the general sidewalk fund, and then fund other locations throughout town that the board determines for those.
Mark, if I can just ask quickly, I'm sorry.
No, please.
There was, at one time, we reviewed, I think, or saw a plan about some additional lots, or maybe one of the boards did. Is there any talk of that, and would he have to come back for each?
He would have to come back for those at that time. He talked about possibly consolidating, and this is, that overall, at least this shows the Baird Road side.
Yep.
So again, it's kind of skewed north is to your right. So this is the house he's currently building. He got approval from the planning board for additional lots, so in that letter, I would stipulate this is the sidewalk waiver fee for lot, I think it's R-1B only, if and when he comes back for these additional home lots. He'd have to come back before this board and ask for a waiver for those additional lots, and it depends on the width of the lot. He talked about consolidating them, he talked about merging two together, so to kind of try to grant a waiver on not knowing what the width is would be challenging, or he may not come in for any additional lots, you know, at any point in the near future, so...
Great, thank you.
I just detailed that in the letter, that it's just for lot R1-B, so it's clear to him.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is, are all the board members in agreement then?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you. We'll just move on to item G, request for a hold harmless agreement at 36 Random Knolls.
So this is a request of a resident at Random Knolls. We do have sanitary sewer easement that runs down the side of their property. Here's their house, driveway. So Dr. Granet, Granet, my apologies if I got that wrong, had requested to install arborvitae within the easement. Kudos to him for asking. I think a lot of people just install stuff within an easement and don't ask. More often, we see fences. He's looking to put arborvitae in there. Did share with him that we would like him to be at least three feet off of the property line, just so he's not hitting the pipe and, you know, dig those by hand. But in discussions with Eric, our DPW director, it'd be good to formalize a hold harmless agreement, so again, if and when we had to dig up the pipe and the trees had to be relocated, removed, it's clear he understands that, but a future homeowner may not understand that, well, they're just trees, or they're just arborvitae, and, you know, unfortunately, if we have to dig up the pipe, it's within our easement, the trees would be disturbed, or, you know, they're small enough to be transplanted, if they're big enough, they may be removed, but it's at their cost. The doctor understood that, you know, was, you know, understanding of that, and still wanted to pursue the hold harmless agreement to allow the arborvitae within that easement. So we don't see it as an issue, we don't see it as, you know, a problem, but just want to formalize that, you know, to understand that they're planted within the easement, and it's at their cost replacement if they need to be taken out.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions by the board? No? Okay. Then that one would be a motion to set a resolution, approve a resolution for supervisor to sign.
So moved.
Okay. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I thought I said can, sorry.
I'll have a motion by Councilperson, colon, a second by Councilperson Draw, to have a, prepare a resolution for the supervisor to sign a hold harmless agreement.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Cinty?
Aye.
Draw?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
All aye.
Okay. H. Making correction to the local law number referenced in Resolution 22-T-194.
Yes, we just kind of wanted to correct the record. The local law number should have been number three, and in the resolution, it was written in as local law number four. When these regulations and local laws are being drafted, the, it was taken up after or before one, so the count, the count just got a little bit confused, and it never got corrected in the resolution. So we want to just bring it to the board's attention, so that we can correct it in the record, that it's actually local law number three. It won't affect the filing, because when the town clerk sends the local law, the resolution doesn't need to go with it. But we wanted the reference to be corrected for the record, so that as we continue on with local laws, we get the number incorrect.
Mr. Wyshaw, do we need to do anything other than say it at this meeting, acknowledge it at this meeting?
Yes, I think that should be sufficient. And then that will allow us to prepare a updated version of the resolution.
Yeah, I think, I think that's fine, but I, in something like this, though, you could also just do a motion to correct the reference in the resolution. That makes it more bulletproof, if you will.
For this, not for a resolution before, next week.
All right. So I'll entertain a motion.
So I'll move that we, that we edit that to local law number three instead of number four.
For Resolution 22-T-194.
Yes, I'm sorry, for, yeah.
It's kind of like, if you were going to do a motion to amend the minutes or correct the minutes, it's kind of similar to that.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilperson Draw.
Second.
And a second by Councilperson Cole. Roll call vote?
Cinty?
Aye.
Draw?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
All aye.
Action item I, authorizing the supervisor to sign the DISCO golf agreement. Ms. Ivers?
Thank you. We prepared the, a draft DISCO golf agreement that was reviewed by the town attorney. Last week, we had the opportunity to review that with Representative and the head of the DISCO organization. We have since made some minor adjustments to the agreement, to the insurance section that should be reflected in the version that you all have reviewed. And so if there's no other issues or concerns, we'd be asking for this board's approval to sign that agreement. I don't, I believe this is...
That's the earlier version.
That's the earlier version. Sorry, my apologies.
Oh, no, that may be my fault, Mark. I might have uploaded the wrong one. So the, we'll make those final adjustments, and the, I've asked the town attorney to look at the, the final form before we actually execute it. And this would be looking for your, the town board's approval to allow the supervisor to sign the agreement.
Okay, I'm just concerned that we're not seeing the most recent...
The changes were not, I wouldn't, they were not, they were not material. There were some minor things, like adding ink after the name of the golf club. And the most important changes were the changes that were made at the recommendation of the insurance broker that just kind of, it gets the agreement to what our intent would be to make sure that we're covered. You know, anytime, I would always recommend that you have an insurance provision or indemnification provision reviewed by insurance broker, and so that's, that's what that change is.
Any questions for either Ms. Ivers or Mr. Weisser? Weisser?
So we're going to get the most correct, are you going, we getting the most correct, the corrected version before the, the meeting, before the legislative meeting?
I'm not sure if this needs, oh, for, I, certainly, yes.
Yes.
I can prepare a resolution.
Yes.
And I'll make sure that you receive, I'll email you tomorrow, the, the most current version.
Yes, thank you.
All right. So given that the town, that Mr. Weisser has stated that the updates that he made are not substantial, I would be okay with moving this forward? Are all the other board members okay?
Yes.
All right. Then could I have a motion for, to prepare a resolution for the supervisor to sign this?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by councilperson Ockenden, second by councilperson Cole. And I'll do a roll call vote.
Cinty?
Aye.
Draw?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
All aye.
Thank you. And Ms. Ivers, again, action item J, a rezoning application for 1345 Schucraft and 933 State Road. And this is something that you have brought before the board before.
Yes, so this is going to require everybody to, to look back in their memory banks. The very first work session meeting of the year, back in January, we discussed the two applications that had been received. The board indicated their, their approval for me to move forward with preparing a resolution calling for the public hearing. We put a hold on setting that public hearing because one of the applicants was out of town during the winter months. Since then, there were some other additional sort of timing or delay issues, but now the parties are ready to move forward. And I didn't want, even though you had already authorized me to prepare a resolution, I didn't want it to just show up after several months had gone by. So I thought I would put it on tonight's agenda to just remind you that you had already approved the preparation of a resolution calling for the public hearing for the rezoning of these two parcels. And if you continue to be amenable to that and there's no change, then I would prep that, those, the resolution for next week's meeting.
Okay. But we did, we did approve setting a public hearing.
You, you did already approve at the very first January work session meeting, so I don't think any formal action is needed. Perhaps just a verbal, you know, sort of affirmation that, that you continue to want to move forward with these two applications for rezoning.
Okay. Is that okay for the board members?
Yes.
Okay, great. So we'll continue on, we'll pick up this project again.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie.